Thanks, public, for coming early and getting a good seat. Beating the rush. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order.
There's no parking.
I was trying to recovers. Okay. Uh, we'll start with the roll. Uh, Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
And Mayor Turner.
Here.
With the pledge of allegiance. Will, though, would you leave us completed the pledge, please? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is acceptance of the agenda and any urgency or items. Do you have any urgency, any not ready?
Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. These are items that are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion, except if any items are removed. We've received a request to remove the item number G, sale of city property. So we'll go ahead and count that as removed, but I'll read the rest of the items and address to move forward on them. Ordinances, waive reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of October 16, 2018. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. Approve the modification to the position summary from the 2018-2019 budget allowing for the reclassification of the park's lead worker to park's foreman. Adopt the resolution accepting construction of the library park place structure by Landscape Structures, Inc., and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. Adopt the resolution accepting the construction of the pavement preservation program by VSS International, Inc., and authorize the filing of the notice of completion. And then the sale of city property item is adopt a resolution for the approval of the purchase and sales agreement for the real sale of property, APN 02546211, to Lake County Tribal Health in accordance with the California Department of Finance approved long-range property management plan. So we'll remove G. Do you want to discuss it now?
Uh, I think we'll discuss it after.
Nope, we wanted to ask the consent. Are there any other items from the consent that council would like to have removed? Any member of the public wish to address any of these items? Okay, so with the exception of item G.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. A through F.
Second.
We have a motion in seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Now we can talk about G.
Madam Mayor, this item was pulled off the consent agenda because we had to do some modifications to the resolution and wanted to make sure we had time to respond to that. And the reason we had to make changes to the resolution was due to the way that property was held. It was held as the city of Lakeport instead of redevelopment agency. So the process is a little different. The distribution is still the same. We turn over the sale proceeds of the county to distribute to all of the taxi entities that are involved in that. But it's just a different process that does not do the, go to the oversight board. You make a determination here as a city, and then we will proceed with putting the property in escrow if approved. And everything's just a little different on the format of how we need it to handle it than what we had originally put in the resolution.
Any questions? Anything you want to add to that, David?
No, that was very thorough.
Okay. Would the public like to address this item?
I guess the only, the main point of the resolution is the finding from the council that the sale is consistent with what's in the long-range property management plan, which is for future economic development, and that includes the sale for the uses that are being implemented.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution for the approval of the purchase and sales agreement for the real sale of property, APN 02546211, to Lake County Tribal Health in accordance with the California Department of Finance approved long-range property management plan.
Second.
Do we need a citation of those findings, like a mention in the motion, or is it in the resolution?
No, they're present.
Okay. Great. Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to citizen input. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject that's within the authority of the city council but not already on tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests? Moving on. Next item is end of the year budget update, review of presentation on the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018, unaudited actuels, and approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2018-19 city budget as recommended by staff.
Nick.
I'm meeting Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you are some unaudited financial statements for the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. These are very similar financial statements to what you guys saw last year. In the staff report, there's a background which we went over last year. I don't think we need to go over in detail again. But basically, in those financial statements, what has been added that you don't see necessarily in the budget is kind of a reconciliation between the audited amounts and like what's available for the city to spend, as far as unrestricted assets that are available for city spending. In the analysis section, I'll note that all three funds exceeded budget expectations. They all did really well. The general fund was in, is anticipated to have an operating surplus for the year ended 2018, June 30, 2018, three-quarters of a million dollars. The primary cause of this surplus are vacant positions in the police department, delayed capital projects, and operational savings across all departments. The water fund for the same year end is expected to have a surplus in the amount of $269,000. Staff did a remarkable job to eliminate the budget deficit. Operational cost savings was the primary cause of the surplus. Operational revenues outperformed budget amounts by 6 percent. So that was also unexpected, but pleasantly unexpected. As for the sewer fund, the surplus in the sewer fund was nearly $2 million, and the majority of this, 1.1 million of this, was due to the closing out of the USDA project fund, which had been borrowing money essentially from the operating fund. So that's all been closed and trued up, and we got basically three-quarters of a million-dollar grant from USDA to help supplement those costs. So that's all been closed out. The other, the other things that contributed to the surplus were operational cost savings, delayed capital projects in the amount of $280,000, and in the sewer fund, the operational revenues outperformed budget by 7 percent, which also pleasant. There are a couple of budget adjustments we're requesting in 1819. I do have, if we look at that kind of in conjunction with the actual financial statement schedules. Let's see how long I'm gonna do this. So if we're looking at the general fund financial statement schedule, you'll see on the surplus deficit line in the unaudited actuels column, the three-quarters of a million dollar surplus. During the 1819 budget preparation, we carried over basically $190,000 worth of projects that are being, that were carried over that weren't completed. Carnegie Library was one that received a budget adjustment that that project hadn't been completed, so that got carried over into the 1819 budget. There were some HVAC projects at the, at the courtyard and the PD that have been wrapped into the NG project, so there was some savings there. The city hall remodel was another one that got carried over. So there was the surplus in those capital projects. Some of them got carried over, some of them are no longer necessary due to them being wrapped into some different funding. One of them that there's a budget adjustment for is the playground. When we were preparing the budget, we were heavily expecting that that project was going to be completed in 1617, and it wasn't. It's since been completed, but we need to make that a budget adjustment in 1819 so that everything's, you know, zeros out at the end of the year. So that's one of the budget adjustments on there. The item after this on the agenda is for the downtown trees, and I've incorporated that budget adjustment in this schedule, just so we're seeing the whole picture. And the third budget adjustment, which we haven't discussed at all yet, is the purchase of two additional police vehicles. I think we are all aware that the police fleet is aging and needs replacement. There are two vehicles that have been budgeted already, and we've been looking at ways to replace some vehicles in that fleet through financing. But at this time, with this level of surplus, we feel that we have the money available. We should just purchase some vehicle, purchase two additional vehicles. So that, we're asking for that budget adjustment for 1819. And after all those changes, when you take the three-quarters of a million and deduct, well, it's been carried over into three new budget adjustments, that leaves 384,000 that we're basically putting into reserve, assigning for future capital projects, capital purchases with that surplus.
Thank you.
Yeah, the suggestion of keeping that in reserve is, you know, we are looking at possible future property for Lakeport, and so that would assist in any future purchase that we have.
Any questions from council?
What was the amount we put into reserve?
300, approximately 384,000.
Boy, that feels good.
And that's out of the 700 and some thousand dollars?
Correct. That's after you take out the projects that were previously carried over in the 1819 budget, and then these three budget adjustments that we're requesting tonight.
And the fees for the police vehicles, we're using that as like the last ones we bought as the amounts we're gonna need for them?
For the budget amounts?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've basically nailed it down where it costs about $45,000 to buy a charger fully outfitted. So that's pretty, I think they came in at about 43 when we bought the two last year.
I don't expect anything different than what we just paid on the last budget here.
Well, I was just kinda thinking that, you know, if we were going to give you two more police vehicles and say they were 43 of these, if we were gonna give you four vehicles, maybe we could get a better deal. I don't know.
Um, there's, there's not really an economies when you're buying two or four.
Oh, okay.
Ten.
But if you're likely troll, there's a difference.
We are trying to do some, 'cause last time they were all the same time, so they all came due at the same time, and they've all worn out. So it's, they really do need more, but we're just kinda trying to get by for staggering a little bit, so in the future, they'll be coming due two or three a year, and we can keep replacing them, so.
We're looking to get another Tahoe through a USDA grant in 1819, and then looking at the capital improvement project, the five-year plan going forward, there'd be two more on the list for 1920, which would basically replace the marked fleet. Is that correct?
Five altogether if we end up getting a USDA grant. And that's something, if we don't get that grant, that maybe we can bring to council and talk about it, that does happen.
Yeah, at this point, the grant, it would be to outfit a K-9 unit, which would account for one of our vehicles that we need for the fleet. So I feel pretty confident about it right now. Of course, you never know what's gonna happen, but I feel pretty confident that our USDA consultant will do a good job on that, and I feel like there's a good chance we'll get it, but that's, that's kinda yet to be seen.
So you think a police cruiser would be better for the K-9 than the Tahoe, is that what?
No, the Tahoe is what we're putting in for the K-9. Because that's more expensive vehicle, so if we get that through the USDA grant, then that's gonna save us, you know, about $45,000.
And then just briefly, real quick, going through the water and sewer funds, just to point out, this sewer fund had savings in operations of nearly $350,000, and the primary source of those was savings in utilities that were budgeted and treatment chemicals. So I think that's a good credit to the water department, really conserving and treating the water without being wasteful. And there is a budget adjustment in the water fund for carrying, the cost, the unspent cost for the loop line were not carried over into the 1819 budget. It was a budget adjustment approved by your council in 1718, and for whatever reason, that $100,000 did not get carried over into 1819. So of the $270,000, 165 of that are projects that have been previously carried over when we adopted the budget, and then there is currently a $100,000 budget adjustment in here. So that, basically making up that entire amount of surplus. However, it's a lot better than the deficit spending that was budgeted of 418,000. So we're basically breaking even instead of having a large deficit. And the sewer fund, the 7 percent unexpected revenue was extremely helpful. About half of what's being left and remaining in the surplus is from that increased revenue. The other half of it is $280,000, which is primarily the camera van, which again, we had, has already been carried over into the 1819 budget, which we were expecting to get in 1718 and just was delayed, and we have it now, and staff has been trained, and it's gonna be out there inspecting sewer mains. And the plan with that surplus, the remaining surplus in that fund, is just to hold it in, hold it in reserves and to have a little bit of money to start making repairs when that camera van gets out there and really hit the I and I stuff pretty hard. So that takes care of the budget adjustments. There is a motion, however, I just thought about this before the meeting, with the item coming up next, there's also a budget adjustment for the tree lights coming up next. So if you...
You wanna take that item first before you approve this?
Since this includes that.
Yeah, this motion would include that budget adjustment without necessarily hearing that staff report on that item, but also has a budget adjustment in the staff report, so.
Okay, so then we'll table this for a minute, move on to our next item.
Perfect.
Should we plan like a pizza party or something over in water for John Meecham?
Staff appreciation is planned for November 9.
November 9. Well, they should get something special.
Okay, so our next item then is award a construction contract to Nate's Electric, Incorporated, for the tree well electrical project. Yeah, pull that up. Sorry about that. Okay, oops, I went too far. Okay, as Nick has alluded to, the tree lights, the contract came up a bit higher than what we anticipated for the project. So due to budgetary constraints, the installation of the trees, electric conductor work was deleted from the much larger, when we did the downtown project. At the time, it was like 40,000 to do that, and because we didn't have the funds at that time, those were cut out of the project. Then a year later, we planted the trees, and now that the trees are planted, we would really like to see the project completed, though it has jumped up $28,000 higher than what we had, the first bid was at the time of the whole full construction project. It has been, what, 316, so a little over two years, three years since we started that project and had the bids.
Three years.
So, yeah, two years.
Three years.
Three years since we actually got the bids. So this is before you know, and was seeing if you wanted to approve the additional costs for the project or wait till a later time, which probably gonna be higher. So, anyway, if you have any questions?
Yeah, the thing that's always out there on the radar is the fact that every time you put off a capital improvement project, costs go up, and this is a 70 percent increase, which is roughly, you know, if you take the price per year, it's very dramatic. And anytime we wait to do a project that we know we want to do, it's just gonna cost us that much more money. The fact that we couldn't do the 40, now we're doing 68, it's a huge increase. If you do the extrapolation over the each year, it seems like the sooner, the better. If we're going to do it, and we plan to do it, time to do it is now, because if it's 68 now, it'll be, you know, 85 in another year, and it'll be 110 in another two years, and it just goes up and up and up, so.
It was hard to get vendors for it. It's very busy, you know, so makes it harder. So.
My question is, the engineer's estimate was $35,000. Was that the 35,000 on the original 40,000?
It must've been the original, because it was 40,000 is what came back when we get the bid then.
That was taken from, that was taken from the original contract.
Okay. The other question I would have is, if I'm not mistaken, anything under $65,000, we don't have to go to a bidding process, right?
No.
It's an informal bidding process. So we still do bidding after, forgot the minimum, but it's an informal bidding, which is different.
You still have to solicit through quotes. You just don't have to do a bidding process where you're receiving closed bids and having a selection committee select the bid.
Okay, because I was, I know there's a 65, and then 200,000, and over 200,000. Okay, so you still have to get somebody to give you...
Yes, you still have to solicit through quotes.
We put it out a lot more than just the three.
We couldn't do this in-house.
$45,000 is the, is the current maximum for us to be able to do something in-house like this. And to be perfectly honest with you, we really don't have the expertise to do this particular electrical type of work. So I would be hesitant even if it was under the $45,000 to do that with city staff. What's involved with this is, one of the costs is the purchase of all the wire. The conduits are there, but the wire is not. So all of the wiring has to be pulled from our main panel there on Special District's wall to all of the tree wells. And then the electrical, the watertight electrical boxes have to be installed in the tree wells, and then all the wiring that's been pulled up has been hooked into that, and then there is a special, a waterproof pigtail that goes on that, that then you can plug all your different stuff into. And so there's really a lot, a lot involved with this. It's not just a matter of tightening down a couple screws, and it's all prevailing wage. Did that answer your question, Tim?
Yeah.
Basically, we don't have the expertise to do it, is what you're saying.
Electricity, unfortunately, is not my expertise.
If you hold this end and this end don't stay in water.
And that, this 60,000 threshold that you're referring to, we just recently cast ordinance, that goes into effect January 1.
Okay, I was just, you know, originally it's 35,000, so that's why I was thinking, wanting to go out to bid, type of thing.
Yeah, it was an informal, it was an informal bid process, and we tried, we solicited all local electrical contractors in Lake County, and in particular in Lakeport. And the award is going to a local Lakeport contractor, Nate's Electric. And, you know, Nate has done a lot of work for the city. He does quality work. I have a very high confidence level in his abilities, and so, you know, at least the money's staying local, and it's not going to some big contractor out of San Francisco. So, I mean, there is a bright side to this whole thing. At least it's staying within our local jurisdiction.
It's electricity. There's always a bright side to electricity.
The one thing that's painfully obvious is that with all of the fire damage in Sonoma County, Lake County, and all over, that right now, it's definitely, contractors are kinda like in the driver's seat with the, with what they want and what they can get, because right now, you don't get a lot of choices, because there's a lot of work out there, and there's a lot of, and a lot of higher prices in neighboring communities. A lot of people are leaving Lake County to go to work every day in Sonoma County at a much higher rate, so getting something done now is not gonna be very economical in any kind of a mode with all the construction going on, so it's just gonna get worse.
But in the scheme of things, it's so worth it. Our downtown improvement project turned out so great. Our main street is just beautiful, and this is an integral part of kind of completing that whole, making a space that people want to come to. So it'll be worth it.
So, I'm sorry, but what exactly are these lights we're talking about? Are they up in the tree? Are they lighting from beneath?
They're gonna be lighting all the trees, and then there'll be electrical outlets in all the trees for all the events that we have in town, then they can plug into the trees instead of all these long cords we have. They're not the best, all of the streets, they can plug into the tree wells.
Right, so they'll be electrical provided for all the vendors, you know, for Dickens and Oktoberfest and all the festivities we have on Main Street. There will be actual electricity in each tree well that they can plug whatever appliances they have, or whatever they, hot plates, or whatever they need to do. So, and that's part of, part of the cost, is we're not running 14-gauge wire. We're running something that's gonna carry some amps, and so unfortunately, there is an expense when you go with big copper wire.
So will those be switched off and on, so they won't be like, people can't be, George can't go out there and charge his laptop?
They'll all be controlled from the panel at Special Districts. So when we have an event, we'll open the panel, and we will energize those. When the event's over, we'll de-energize them and lock the panel back. So that will not be available just for anybody to walk along and plug their stuff into.
Well, would it also be like on a timer, so that when the night comes, the lights come on the trees automatically?
Um, I don't...
Yes.
Yes. There'll be a photocell involved. There'll be a photocell involved with that, George. I mean, all of our other lights run off of photocells.
Well, I was thinking, you know, streetlights come on, so will the tree lights?
Right.
Okay, the council is done with questions. Would any member of the public care to address this item? Bring it back for action.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to move to award a construction contract to Nate's Electric, Inc., for the tree well electrical project.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Did you, wait, what did you say?
Yeah, what was it? It was a kind of grumble...
I kind of stink. I'm not really in favor. $68,000 for some lights on some trees doesn't, I don't like it. Well, but I, but I do like the fact that the vendors can plug in, so I'm torn on this one. $68,000 to light trees isn't, isn't, in my mind, a good expenditure of money.
Do we need to take a moment extension, or is it a no?
But I do like the fact that the vendors will be able to utilize the plug-in, so I'll, I'll vote in favor of it.
Well, make up your mind.
I'm just talking myself into it.
You know, just along the same lines, having been involved in the Dickens Fair for years, we have to hire a, or not we, but the chamber, whoever's involved, has to bring out these octopus-type things, and they have all of these boxes, and they have to go, and they have to hook it up, and it's a very intricate situation. It probably costs, I don't know, thousands of dollars for them to bring out all of these intricate things, which are very cumbersome and could actually be a liability, because they're just all over the place with all these tangled wires, and they run into all the different tents. Having something that is switchable, that you can just plug in at each of the trees, it would be so slick and so nice, and it would be economical in the long run for the agencies or the different organizations that go down there and use that, because it is, I can't even imagine the amount of work that goes into putting those little, I don't know what those things are called.
Spider box.
Spider boxes. I knew it was octopus or spider, someone was aiming, but anyway, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and this would be so slick. I just think it would be so much more efficient in being downtown and be able to just put one plug in, not running it all over, because they were behind the tents, you know, everywhere, and it, to me, it was like a light... And to me, it was like a liability situation, where something tripping and this kind of thing.
Do you realize we just already had five eyes on this, right? Okay.
Well, I was just kind of making Tim feel better.
We want him to feel good.
About his eye.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
So that motion carries. We're going to go back then to the end of the year budget for any further, any public input on that one? If not, any further discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
That's.
Council. Oh, I'll give you a moment. Get back to that.
Would that be the amendment to the fiscal year?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if there's no further, I move to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2018-19 city budget as recommended by staff.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
We're watching you.
Our next item, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lakeport, establishing an ad hoc selection advisory committee for the selection of the members of its committees and commissions with terms expiring in 2018, to be comprised of two City Council members.
Kelly!
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This agenda item is, this is to recommend that the council establish an ad hoc committee made up of two members of the City Council to interview and make recommendation back to the full council on members of various committees and commissions. We do have a new, a new recommendation that will need to be made this year, and that is for the Fire Board. As you may be aware, the Board of Supervisors has been making those recommendations and doing some research. The city learned that the City Council was supposed to be making that recommendation for two members. So we will be advertising and accepting applications for Fire Board. And the attachment to the agenda also spells out what seats are expiring on December 31st. There's three members of the Planning Commission, two members of Parks and Rec, three members of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, four members of the LEED Act, two members of the Measure Z Advisory Committee, and then the two seats for the Fire District. So, unless you have any further questions?
One for David. The people that go on the Fire Board, can they be on City Council?
I don't think so, I think there may be an incompatible office issue, given that there's an overlapping jurisdiction, jurisdictional boundaries.
Maybe just like the school district would do that.
Well, I know that Vector Control is a special district, and I'm on that, so I just.
Correct, but Vector Control actually requires that there be an appointment like that, and it specifically carves those out in the Vector Control district law.
Okay.
So I think that's the difference. If the legislature says it's okay, then it's okay, otherwise it's not.
I can't be a fireman, I don't.
Any other questions for Kelly?
You can be a fireman, just not on the Fire Board.
Thank you, Kelly. Any member of the public care to address this item? Nope, bring it back to council for discussion.
So we've done this the last couple times when we.
At least once.
At least once, and it was a pretty smooth process.
I appreciate your patience, and it brings to that process.
Took the last one to get to know the applicants a little better, and.
So are you looking for the two people that you want to put on there?
I was leading up to that.
I figured that.
Where I'm going.
Well, I'd be willing to do it again. Do you want to do it with me, Meera?
I'd be happy to, if nobody else is burning to do it. All right, so then we have our two. Ready for action, unless there's any further discussion? We have a resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the City Council of the City of Lakeport, establishing an ad hoc advisory committee for the selection of members of the city's various committees and commissions with terms expiring in 2018. Do I need to name?
Yes.
Myself, Jason Matina, and Meera Turner as committee members.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to our last item, council business. Margaret?
I'll just let council know next week, I will be gone to Ucaia every day for FEMA training, and Kevin's going with me, and Kevin and I, who else, and Paul, and Tom, is Tom going?
He doesn't sound like Tom.
Okay, so there's going to be three of us going, it's five days of training.
Wow.
So isn't that, no, let's turn that.
Great, David?
You have a report?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to take just a second. I had a long conversation with George today, and I think maybe that, I have an apology to council if I did not explain our payment treatments that we use besides overlays within the city. And so I just kind of wanted to give a real quick brief rundown on what happened on 11th Street and South Main Street, and the type of treatment that we chose, and the reason that we chose that, and the pluses and the minuses of that to say an overlay. Because I've heard some comments about the aesthetics of that treatment. The treatment that we used was a, what they call a cape seal, and that is comprised of a rubberized chip going down first, which is kind of a newer technology, using recycled tires and making a rubber compound that goes in the oil that then helps adhere the chips to the existing surface. And then over the top of that, we put what they call a micro-surface, which is a slurry type with using sand and, you know, here we're back to polymers and all that business, I'm not going to elaborate on that. But, so those two things together make what is a cape seal. And that's what we did on 11th Street and on South Main Street. Those types of treatments, and there's a number of different ones. That's the one that we chose, that we felt that would give us the best protection of our infrastructure that we have there by sealing. Its main intent was to seal all the cracks, seal the road up so that there's no water intrusion going into our asphalt. And then the micro-surface on top was to give us some durability in a wearing surface. So we're hoping to get 10 years out of that road now before we have to go back to do anything, which at that time is probably going to be looking at an overlay versus not doing anything. And then in five years, you know, we're looking at an overlay without a doubt within five years. And if we go any longer than that, then, you know, what we've all talked about before, then we're looking at reconstruction costs and how that is. So the only downside to doing those kinds of preventative types of treatments is they're not always as aesthetically pleasing as a brand-new paved road. But the cost of those is a third of what it would cost to overlay a project like that. And so I just wanted to make sure council understood why we chose to go with that, and that we're really looking, I don't think it looks horrible. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not doing backflips over, you know, the total of appearance as it came out. I was hoping it was going to be a little bit better than what I feel it is. But it is very functional, it meets all the requirements, it met all of our specifications, and it's going to do what we need it to do, which is give us the extended life on that road so that we can focus on other roads in our road system that need, that are to the point where they need the overlay. And we're going to need that money to do those, in particular from Lakeport Boulevard to First Street, and from Fifth Street to Clearlake Avenue. We're going to have to start focusing on those stretches and try to get something done. And those are beyond doing the type of treatment that we just did on 11th and on South Main Street. So I just wanted to find if council had any questions or any comments on that, in case I just didn't really explain what we were, what you were getting. Or I'm hoping it met your expectations, but if it didn't, I really need to hear that.
I didn't realize it was aesthetically unpleasing. I like the lines, it was really nice to have them, to put their lines on there again.
Yeah, but they didn't do the lines. The people that paved it didn't do any of the lines.
Right, but I like them.
I like the lines because I've got them on.
Well, I think the thing that George and I both agreed on was, you know, as you approach the freeway area, there was some comment that, you know, one of the jets was clogged, and there was clearly like a, I don't know, a three or four-inch swath that went down for a measurable distance. And then, and I travel it every day, twice a day. And I saw that they put like little arrows in there, and I was kind of, I said, oh, well, they're all over that. They're going to take care of that, you know, where the, because I talked to one of the workers, and said, oh yeah, one of the jets was plugged, or whatever it was. And then, and I think George was just as dismayed as I was, is that as time went on, you know, they have those lines in there, and then they came in and did the micro-finish, and they were still there. So it was like, they know it's there, they saw it, as we did, and then when they got done, they put the finish over without doing any pre-treatment before they put the micro-finish. I don't know that it's in the driving area, because it seems like it's kind of in the middle. It's more of an eyesore than a, you know, a problem with the material being, you know, in the wrong place. It just, I think that both George and I have noticed this, and traveling it every day was kind of like a little annoying. And then when it was all finished, I'm going, they never fixed it. And they put the little arrows like they were going to fix it. They went and marked it, and they said, yeah, this is a problem area. And then they put the micro-seal on and slurry, and it was still there. And I think that's the only problem, that I don't know that it's going to affect the wearability. It's not really in the traffic where your wheel is. But when you spend, you know, this kind of money, you think that, hey, are you really happy with that as the contractor? You did not see that, and then when it's all smooth, you see it, and then there's a big, that goes on for quite some distance. And George had like some photographs of it, it was like, wow. Anyway, that's the only thing, but as far as, you know, the durability and lasting for 10 years and all that, it's just that when you pay for something, it would be like if someone painted the wall, and they missed like a one-inch strip painting the wall, and you're like, well, you didn't see that? And they go, well, it meets code, so it's all good.
Well, actually, it's an optical illusion, seriously.
Oh, is it?
It's an optical illusion, because the material that they came back and patched it with was slightly different than the original that they put down. But if you actually go out there, it is almost the exact same level as the stuff on the sides.
Don't do that. Because I'm going to stop and check that out.
Stop and check it out.
Because, I mean, that's good news, that's good news. I think that's great.
So it only has to bug you for 10 years.
Yes. I mean, if it's an optical illusion, I know how those things work, that's great. I think that that was just, that's good, that they saw it, they addressed it, different material, optical illusion, I'm cool with that.
Right.
But I am going to go out.
I encourage you to do that.
And you know what, I might just take George with me.
Well, I would send George.
I am stopping traffic, and I'll do anything you can stop and get on.
So that was, that was all I had, just a lot going on. Our strippers were meeting with them tomorrow to go over their schedule, to get them back on track, finishing all the striping and putting the buttons down. 11th Street still gets buttons. And so, and then just a real quick, we've been, our FEMA expert has been here Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, helping us to try to get FEMA off dead center and get some things wrapped up. He's reviewing all of our paperwork, make sure that we have all the stuff that we need and that we're on track with our stuff. And that audit came out really good, really, really happy with what he had to say. And so just a lot going on, and that's it.
He couldn't stop complimenting our staff of how they have got to pick work and how they did it in a timely manner. He was very impressed with our staff, so thank you, Doug.
You outlasted him.
Still inviting him, but yes.
I do have one question, and maybe Kevin should answer this, but when I was on the Traffic Safety Committee, we were talking about putting a crosswalk across 11th Street at Forbes. And it doesn't look like anybody's going to do that. Can they do that with this striping?
No.
In a word.
But, but to elaborate just really briefly on that, we are working with the APC and our local TAC, and as part of that programs that we're trying to get funded and we're working on is putting an actual flashing signal and a crosswalk at High Street, not at Forbes, as part of our safe routes to school type activities. That's where all the school kids cross, they really don't cross at Forbes as much as they do at High Street. And so that is in the works, is that going to be tomorrow? No. But it is definitely on the radar, and it is definitely something that we're working towards. Is getting some, and it would just be, when you want to cross, you push the button, the light flashes, and then, you know, there, the crosswalk's there, and then you go ahead and cross. And so that is in the works, so we are very cognizant of that, though, George. We need some good safe crossings on 11th Street.
Thank you.
Nick?
You have a report?
After all that?
They've took a ballpark time.
Yeah, I just wanted to make council staff aware, this is a Police Officer Association project, but they paid for the, to have the pink patches made for breast cancer awareness. And so I want you to be aware, because I've authorized officers at home to get informed for the next month, if they choose to. Otherwise, the POA is selling the patches for $10 apiece, and they're giving all the profits from that to the local sponsoring survivorship organization here in Lakeport, the one that just did the wire last weekend, so just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Thank you.
So if we want a patch, we just want to help, please?
Yeah, great. I'm really excited today, we, the lift is all installed, and today we passed our state inspection on it. So that's, but the Carnegie project is nearly complete, so we'll let you know when the free elevator rides will be.
Employee Appreciation Day.
Yeah, as was mentioned, the Employee Appreciation Day is November 9th, so if you guys can put that on your calendar. I can send out a calendar invite, does that help?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll do as we have in past years, have a lunch where council can serve food, present, whatever's going on. Margaret did secure the fairgrounds, so it's an iffy time of year, so we have a fairgrounds building inside.
Same places last year, the little theater.
Can't we go roller skating?
You probably worked something out with Jeff, yeah.
I think the rooming up was pretty big, too, I just wanted to skate around. Anyway, I'll send you out and invite.
Margaret?
Councilmember Spur?
Basically, just wanted to remind people that can attend the school safety meeting at 7:00 PM on the 22nd. Back soon, yes. Other than that, I joined the environmental quality for the League of Cities Committee.
Good, cool, thanks, George.
Good luck with that.
I'm cheering that.
Yes, I know, and I had to ask them if two people from Lakeport can be in the same committee.
Of course, yep. Yeah, and the governor from Del Rio is also on there, or Rio Del, yeah.
Thank you.
It's an exciting one, you'll love it.
It is, they're spicy.
You're spicy.
Yeah.
Councilmember Arlet?
No report.
Councilmember Matina?
No report.
And Mayor Brookton?
No report.
Okay, I just wanted to say thanks again to Park staff for the awesome job they did installing that playground. We had that continued item, so it just reminded me about what an amazing job they did, and thank you.
It is swarmed.
And that.
The one thing I didn't like about the playground was that bar that I thought kids could run into and trip over. Well, I was out there looking at it today, and it's much higher than the bar that was in the picture, so people can see it, so I think it's a good, good job.
All right, the only thing I have else to report is on Monday, I'll be going with Kelly and another staff member down to somewhere to where are we going? Anyway, the flyaway to go to a seminar on CalPERS, the retirement system.
Fix it.
Yeah, this one is a session that is going to be fine-tuned for electeds, so like I told Margaret, hopefully they'll use very small words, and my eyes won't fog over. Oh, my word, so ambitious thing. Sure, I'm going to come back with all sorts of chock-full, inspiring, hopeful messages. And that will close our meeting for today. Thank you, thanks for coming.